Call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's at nine AM for just a minute. Two of them. The Commissioner's courtroom, one sixty-two West First Street, Trinity County Courthouse, Groveton, Texas, seven five eight four five. Mr. Lynam, you come to do prayers for the former mayor.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, brother.
I've been in this county thirty-three years now, so I got no desire to go nowhere else.
You got it.
Father, we thank you. We do thank you for each one of these guys and ladies that take care of our county. Father, we thank you for all our first responders, and we ask you to always watch over and keep them safe. We ask you to bless every employee of the county, Father, and just watch over each one in a peaceful way. And so, Lord, we love you and we thank you for just being an awesome God and taking care of us, Lord. And we just ask you to bless them after they make the right decisions so that they will help our county. He will give you praise and honor and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Praise be to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Union of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
That's the number of the report. Number four, approval of minutes from November twenty-sixth. Did Joe lead through wrong?
Yeah, I'm the showroom. I didn't find anything. How many push for true?
On second. Number five, discuss an act on public funeral cases.
Just on the first one. If you look up there where it says a person making application, that's what's funeral policy. And our policy says that it's a family member that makes. It's not a funeral. We'll go back and check it, but we changed those, those guidelines. I don't know the person. And the second one is the same thing. And if you look, he's got a piece of property.
He lives in Camp Ranch. I know the fellow. It's still there.
Speak it up for him.
Yeah, I know the second one. He has a piece of property in Camp Ranch, so I'm speaking there. I don't know if any of his family members did the same thing about any family members. But I know he lived with his mother there, but she passed away a few years back. There is a piece of property there that, I mean, I believe it's back. If you look through the taxes, it remains back on taxes. So I'm thinking about taking care of it still the same way as we.
Is that what we're doing with the prayer report? In the very back of the newspaper?
There's supposed to be a check on every one of them that comes in to see if they have any real property. But a fucker funeral is somebody that doesn't have family, doesn't have any means to pay for a funeral. And so, the county lots seven hundred and fifty dollars to do that if they qualify. But.
And the first two don't qualify.
Well, if they say next of kin, there's none on both of them.
I don't know the first person, but the second person, I do. I know they have a piece of property here in the county. Now, I'm guessing what would happen, John might know it better than I do, but I guess the funeral on, leaning on that property or something, is that what happens?
Sure.
So I think the second one, they have means. So I would open before approving the second one. I don't know the first person. But if that's a policy that a family member has to do it, the family member didn't submit these applications to the funeral.
Yeah, they're claiming, like I said, next of kin is none. I don't know if they did that round circle or whatever, but I just.
On this first one, it's one oh six A on street in Trinity. I think I know who that is. If that's true, he owns his property. Wasn't that Mary Ann? Was that house? It don't matter then. That's a house. I'd make a vote on the table.
Number six, discuss an act on official bonds. Number seven, discuss approval of personal actions form.
The person is going to be, you got to put it for me, puts two weeks in and found a job in the pipeline, something like that.
Didn't we already do one on, uh, memory retention?
I thought we had.
I think too.
This is, this is changing the status.
Probably that time when they retired and now they're living in part-time. Are they living here part-time?
I gotta go down there and see it in front of her.
Because I just saw this one the first time I've seen.
Yeah, well, you just know it.
Yeah, okay. Steve's got one.
I'm guessing that one that we approved, she's part-time, I guess.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Oh, okay. I see it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve's got one he's going to be approved for.
Trying to make Christmas, man.
Bet you never did. Back most of the approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know the road should have, but I'm in court right now. Huh? What road you talking about? Lakeview? Yes, sir? Okay. All right, I see what I'm doing. All right. For Joe to burn and put that red clay out there, bus can't get through. I'll let you get off Sam, so I'm gonna get something on it.
Good morning.
Morning. Just an act on approval, claim check.
That's a grand total. There were three payroll periods in this month of November. So when we run the report, it includes all of the payroll now. And you see all of the payroll as well as the vendor invoice things. But I do break it out for you so you know how much of that was vendor invoices. On the very back pages, behind page fifteen of the report, you will have a breakdown by department of how much of that total was charged to those funds. And in the last pages are the actual individual vendors and the persons that are paid.
So you said on this page where it breaks it down on departments, it shows, that's just what was billed out or paid?
Right. So as you look at, you see Grove Ridge one?
Yeah, thirteen.
Yeah. So you would be able to find those within that area? And that's how much was charged to your fund?
Bobby, is this since October first?
This is November, one through the end of November.
Well, I was just.
Yeah.
I left it more than a month ago. Was it stopped?
It was, when I was shocked when I ran it, but then I realized that three payroll periods are in that total. But yes, that's why we say in October, November, we have no cash flow from Adleorm, so we have to take from investment. So we should be seeing, I would think by now, income from Adleorm for December. I haven't seen anything yet. I mean, had you posted yet. And you may notice on payroll taxes and things like that, they won't post necessarily every month. If they're paid quarterly, they'll be posting quarterly. I'm sure it's the one in there. Nope, it'll post quarterly. And insurance probably posts even later.
How does the program work? Is that better?
Yes, working fine. My partner, we're not having any issues. We're still trying to clean up information to make sure that the votes are ending this year twenty-four clean and okay and just getting caught up.
We're gonna send you questions. I'll make a question approval. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So then, number nine, discuss an act of approval and claim invoice forms. Disaster related purchases.
There were just a few from November twenty-fifth through December fifth. We just ran it for the periods that were just done recently. So you can see fuel and road materials.
So that, uh.
Yes.
I just want to think, the last, you know, six thousand something I got from there, that was for disaster related deal. I haven't seen it on here yet.
I need to check and see if it was coded. It should have been for the system to capture this ad. But if we, anything that has to do with roads, fuel, we're stacking those in a separate billing way. I was gonna let you know, Vicki, she's not here this morning on the brand on FEMA, but she's got two projects, major projects for each one of you that have already gone up to FEMA. They should be processed in this next, this next week. Yours went up sooner. You have one of your projects went up a couple of weeks ago, so we'll pop it yours, you're ready first, and they'll start to come down.
I just haven't seen it.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be sure of that. Is that the one for?
Like get away and hold that rock.
Cause I saw the invoices.
Is that you getting something from Brian and Brian?
Yeah, that's what. Yeah, there was one saying Brian and Brian should have been on here too.
Years or what? I saw the whole thing from close to just now.
Yeah. We're supposed to be coding up with the job code so we can capture them. So we missed those Brian and Brian, because I already didn't see them in voices.
I'll say it's supposed to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten, information on Air Life, Vac, Live Team, PHI, Flight Help.
Good morning. We talked, discussed this a little bit last month. My name is Connie Marriott. I'm the Director of Rural Outreach for HCA Houston Healthcare. That is, HCA owns largest healthcare system in the country. We own HCA Conroe, previously Conroe Regional, HCA Kingwood, Women's Hospital, Texas, Texas Orthopedic. We also operate HCA Airlife, which is an air medical. Trinity County is super fortunate to have really three air medical services that service this air area, air evac, PHI, and then HCA Airlife. So Brian had actually, my coworker, had actually sent in information, I believe, Bobby included in your packet, related to the No Surprises Act and air medical billing. HCA does not have a membership program, so in that degree, we don't have a horse in this to race. Our goal was just to kind of educate you about the billing practices and how the billing for air medical works, as well as the ETAs of each aircraft. So do you have any questions that Brian can happily answer related to the billing practices and how all that works?
So with the billing practices, with the No Surprises Act that was passed into two thousand and twenty-two, January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
It goes in effect much position?
It went in effect in two, January first of two thousand.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Yes, sir. Basically, there is a balanced billing. So a patient, a commercial patient is only responsible for their copays and deductibles that's outlined in their commercial insurance. That is all that they're responsible for. Medicare patient is responsible for twenty percent. A lot of those Medicare patients that we found have other insurance, supplemental, yeah, health insurance that usually takes care of that. And then a uninsured or private pay insurance, we typically, we don't negotiate with them. We try to work out a payment plan if we can. If not, if they don't have any money, I mean, you can't get blood out of a turnip. We're not, we've not put lanes against houses or damaging anyone's credit, anything of that nature. So we have not, not found the need to have a membership program. So that is not our stance, and we do not advocate that, like Connie was saying. So you have any questions about air medical billing?
Yeah.
Anything of that nature for us? And one thing I've always pointed out to our doctors too in our hospitals is that typically if a patient is there and needs to be flown, they're coming in a pretty bad situation to our hospital. A lot of times they're deductibles, they're already been taken care of, or you know, they're gonna meet that anyway within the hospital setting because they're high duty. We're typically just advocating for the closest, most appropriate aircraft for this area for your patients and your city folks.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jason Monday. I'm the National Director of Air Med Care Network. It was okay by approach. I was gonna give you the slide of what I brought up. So thankful for the opportunity to come in and enjoy your beautiful community. I'm obviously not from here if you pick up your accent. I'm from the other T state, Tennessee, and I was speaking with the Commissioner earlier. I live down the road from birthplace of somebody y'all may know David Crockett. So we do have some ties between Tennessee and Texas. As I mentioned, I'm the National Director of Air Med Care Network. You'll know us locally through our Air Vac Life, Team Air Rescue, and Air Med programs. We are Global Medical Response Solutions, so I'd like to kind of walk through what we are as an organization because we do have a lot of brands and logos and it can get a little bit confusing. Global Medical Response is the world's largest medical transport solution and company. Underneath it, you have an air division called Air Medical Group Holdings, and this is where you'll see some of the largest arealess companies in the world operating underneath. In Texas, you'll know it is Air Vac Life Team and the House of the Air Rescue and Air Med Programs, a med trans corporation. What the Air Med Care Network product does is it unifies as an alliance form with these companies, brings them together. Each of those has their own membership program, but they all fall under the Global Medical Response Solutions ownership. Air Med Care will bring them together so as you become a member of one, you're automatically a member of the other. If you look through the slide deck, we're the world's largest arealess membership program. We have a forty-year history, just shot four million members. We have over three hundred and twenty bases across thirty-eight states. So we have a very vast product that covers that, and we've been doing this for quite some time. We have an entire division of employees. This is not a part-time thing for us. It's a very serious obligation to extend this to our patients in the event that they choose to become members and honor what we say, and that's the zero out-of-pocket expenses in the event that any of our providers transport them. The household dynamic is something that we started four years ago because it provides an all-encompassing coverage. You see a lot of non-traditional members under households today, specifically post-COVID. You see a lot of adult age children that may not be under the major medical plan. You see a lot of parents that are coming to COVID locate with their children. Our household dynamic covers any and everybody under that residential roof. So it has no exclusions based on age, relationship, status, or any of those things. You could literally buy a membership with us, have a friend move in, call us, and there's no additional cost. We cover any and everybody. I believe I still hold the record with twenty-one people under one roof, and they pay one annual fee, and we cover all those individuals. Additionally, we have no caps on the number of transports in the event that they need use of service. We don't penalize them for using the service. Our record holder today is thirteen transports under one membership, and this gentleman's been with us for twenty years. We offer in your package a municipal site plan. We actually started this concept many years ago. We have many, many municipal site plans throughout the state of Texas and across the nation. It's a community-wide plan that's gonna provide county level coverage for all of your residents, similar to what you have in place right now. The biggest difference is we have more vast coverage. We have more aircraft. Across the nation, we have forty-two aircraft participating in the state of Texas alone. Volume-wise, when you look at the transport differences, AMCN providers and under the Air Medical Group Holding and GMR Solution transport a hundred and forty thousand emergent patients every year. So if you average that out, that's an emergent patient every three point eight minutes. So we're very busy in this world, and we certainly understand it and take that obligation seriously and make sure that we have equipment, resources in place. The membership solution doesn't dictate whether somebody's flown or not. We agree with HCA that you should use the most appropriate nearest available aircraft because minutes count in these scenarios, and we don't want to jeopardize a patient's help for a dollar, you know, on the transport side of the house. The membership solution offers, it functions in a backend type model. Whether somebody's transported or not has no relevance on their membership status. You know, our clinicians and our crew members most times don't even know what person's in there, don't care. They're there to save a life, and they do it very, very well. The billing kicks in, and as mentioned, the No Surprise Act is in place, but the No Surprise Act has many things at the federal level, doesn't solve everything. If you dig into the details of the No Surprise Act, you're gonna see it protects the commercially insured individual. It affords no protection to your uninsured. It has no impact on your Medicare, Medicaid populations, your Tri-Care populations, your Indian health populations. All the No Surprise Act does is say that you'll take that out-of-network fee schedule and bring it into an in-network fee schedule when it becomes arealess operations. So if you look at your benefit guide, it's used to be balanced billing provided on January twenty-two, where you could have that balanced billing implication. Now it doesn't. Whatever the benefit guide says, it's gonna treat it as an in-network provider. Our perspective and our stance is we don't take a dismissive approach to how impactful cost sharing can be on the resident. We know the high deductible health plans exist. We know the twenty, thirty, forty percent co-insurance exists. If we can provide a low-cost solution specifically at a municipal level, like you have in front of you today, to eliminate those cost sharing concerns, we're happy to do that if somebody chooses to invest in that. Membership concept is very, very simple. Let me back up a second. One more thing to look under the No Surprise Act is what's called an adverse benefit determination. Big word, the simple translation is medical denial. If you Google any source right now today, you'll see that in the insurance carrier world, that is a huge problem, the number of medical claims that are denied. You see a recent case that's grabbed the national news where they talk about deny, delay, and defend. We know it's a problem, and we know it goes to an arduous appeals process, but in the end, we can't control the outcome. If the insurance carrier denies the claim, that is a non-covered service under the No Surprise Act. It is not a balanced bill. It is therefore de-billed with the patient's responsibility. I think everybody in the room knows how costly this service is and how expensive it can be to transport a patient. We want to provide that solution at a low-cost, prepaid option, and that is the definition of the membership program. We know this intimately because we communicate at the federal level, ensure compliance at all costs. So you have to price these things very specifically to make sure that they pass a compliance test. I'll reference my comments earlier where we have a forty-year history of doing this. We are the largest network out there. When it comes to compliance, we are the bullseye that anybody looks at to test us, and we make sure that we develop a good, solid partnership with any future partnership. This gives you a long-term relationship with us. It's not something we're here to try to get for one year and then walk away. We're not here trying to get it just to steer flight volume. We want a long-term partnership with our communities. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions for me. Okay. The municipal site plan offer that's in front of you today is forty thousand dollars and some change. That equates to about two dollars and eighty-seven cents per resident. What that would do is cover your residence in the event that any of our providers transport them, picked up in Trinity County and any contiguous counties. We offer an upgrade option for each of those. If they want to expand to the full network coverage, they can do that. We're gonna take our standard rate from ninety-nine dollars down to fifty-five or forty-five, depending on whether it's a senior household. In addition, if they upgrade, we're gonna offer our non-emergent services, and this is our flyable model that operates domestically in lower forty-eight. In addition, we also have an international model. So you've probably read the news where people go to Europe, have a heart attack, they need to be brought from that hospital back to United States. We actually do that through our Air Med International Company. So there's multiple levels of discount. We certainly appreciate the offer to talk to you about it today and present to you, and I'm certainly open to any questions or further discussion if you seek it.
I have one or two. Your closest one is Crockett. Is that your eye, Crockett?
Yes, Brad here with our operations.
We're, okay. If Crockett's busy, where's the next one?
The next air evac?
Yeah.
To which part of the county? So it's gonna depend. Provided some information for you last month. I can do that again this time.
I believe you did.
So if we're talking to Trinity, for example, closest aircraft's gonna be Crockett. The next closest air evac or a police helicopter that's covered by Air Med Care is gonna be Madisonville. So that's a twenty-seven nautical miles, super rough roll of boat, but that number can, that's about how many minutes your flight time is.
And then on this side of county?
Next is probably going to be, actually, the next closest ones for us are gonna be Brian, which is also a high-part program, in Fairfield. Down in Groveton, again, it's still gonna be Crockett. And if we're just listing the Air Med aircraft, next one again is gonna be Madisonville. Then you also have Jasper, and you also have Fairfield, that are all within a sixty-five nautical mile radius.
In your packet, there's a map that does a snapshot of about a hundred and fifty nautical miles to. In your packet, there's a map that does a snapshot of about 150 nautical miles to understand the resources that are available. Those are important in extreme emergency situations where you're bringing in multiple aircraft. We've seen that happen. I think with Houston, five years ago with flooding, we had to bring in a fleet. We have FEMA contracts. You'll see them activated nationally.
I believe it's in packets and there's one of the United States with the dots all over. It just doesn't, in our area, it doesn't show the too many, too many dots of y'all around it. Just one of those question.
So an individual family has been by of ancient policy to y'all?
Certainly.
Whether the county has the contract or not?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And we have some of your residents that are participating with us today and have been for years. Again, they're looking at the vast coverage. And then if you look at this paper right here, I just kind of zoomed in. That would get you out of it. So some of those dots are, you know, helicopters, some are fixed wings. You have a blended model to service the communities, but some of the transports need to go further away. We do have a dedicated fleet of fixed wings on any given day. We have 60 of those at our disposal. We transport coast to coast. So we stay very active in the transport world.
This is a question for you. If Crockett's on another call, come from Bryan, how, how long the flight is that?
Uh, let's see. Coming from Bryan, while we're talking to Groveton, the next closest one is Madisonville. And that's 41 nautical miles. So roughly 20 minute flight time, roughly. They're gonna also have to lift. I don't want to be deceiving you.
There is currently Trinity County residents that have y'all.
On the emergent and the non-emergent. So and we factored those in. You have to, when you run the calculations, you have to extract your Medicaid population because you cannot offer a membership to Medicaid. So I take the census data, like last census data and I strike that. And then we run the analysis, you know, to turn around and see what type of being this eligible household. And then we have to run the volume, the write-off implications. You have to remain financially solid. You cannot undercut these. If you're operating upside down, you're non-compliant in the membership world. We're able to do it at this price because we have an entire network at these plants with 18,000 plus business partnerships out there. So. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If you don't mind, just to sneak a little bit, that's all I have from the operations side. So when I came and spoke to you all, now I won't do the, the long introduction. I think we all had a chance to talk last, last month, but uh, the intent wasn't to come and pitch a membership. I'm a operations guy. My thought process is, you know, we have two kind of guiding lines and that's right. First and foremost, I'm sure you can relate with this taking care of a patient. I have a 16 year old daughter that just started growing. It scares the absolute bejesus of me. She doesn't live in Trinity County, but she does thrive there here. If something happened to her, my thought process, like y'all vocalized last month, is I don't care if it's a red helicopter or a yellow one or an orange one. I just want the closest one. And my concern from the patient perspective and being selfish, you know, is that it doesn't seem like the current system is set up to do that, right? We could look at, and I'll share these with you again. Those numbers are just pulled straight up off of Google Earth. So objective data, there's nothing, you know, biased in here at all. My concern is the, the system isn't currently set up to encourage the closest aircraft to be called. Objectively, we heard from y'all's current service that 39 patients have been flown here to date when we spoke last month. If you look at the population centers of where the majority of the population is, there is a section of the county where PHI should absolutely be first call, not me. Those are not the, the most well populated parts of the county. And you compare that to what, you know, HCA spoke about, I mean, they've flown in, which a fleet of zero since this started. We did two at the very beginning when the hospital started and then that was cut off immediately. So, so that's the perspective I'm coming from. Last month when we spoke, it was with that in my heart, truly was. What can we do best for, for your residents? People that are here, drive through here, make sure they're always getting the most appropriate aircraft. As it so happens, our, our number two kind of guiding line is to serve the customer, which would be you guys. So it so happens that we're actually pretty knowledgeable about the, the whole membership thing. So that's why we're here today. Just kind of wanted to touch in from, from our perspective as the patient caregivers. I'm not the subject matter expert. That would be Jason on the membership. But if there's any questions on flight times, distances, operational questions, anything like that, just going to go for myself as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know you're all pretty familiar with our membership at this point in time. It is very similar to the one that you just heard about. There are a couple of things that I would like to point out. Specifically, there's been a lot of conversation about flight times and distance. And if you'll look at page four of the packet, you'll see some of our flight times from various locations. How long it takes to get to each location and from here to Houston to Conroe. We have a 407, so our helicopter. You'll notice a little bit of details about it. Let's see. On a few pages later, the title being Lufkin PHI or Medical Base. It has a few details about our helicopter and some of the special features of it. We do carry whole blood, which is a significant benefit to your patients. We also have an ultrasound coming first quarter of 2025 that's used to determine if there's a positive or negative fast exam such as internal bleeding. We have a transport ventilator, IV pumps. Speak to some of these things. We have a few. Let's see here. We have our fly PHI, a mobile blood-based application that helps electronically request a helicopter to specific GPS coordinates. And we have family tracks that allow your family members to monitor your progress on the helicopter in real time so they can see where you are and the helicopter's diverted. They can actually see it happen in real time on, on their phone or computer. It does expire after a little after 15 minutes after arrival so that it protects the patient's private data.
How many helicopters have you got there?
In Lufkin, we have one helicopter in Lufkin and we have one in Conroe. Those are our two closest to here.
So you're showing on page four, you're showing Apple Springs, 16 miles, seven to eight minutes. You're showing in Groveton, Texas, 26 minutes, I mean 26 miles, 12 to 13 minutes.
No, but it's a Trinity. They come from Congo over here.
It's on the left there. They didn't put it on the map on marketing. Like you said, that it made the map a little too crowded. So if you look on the left here, you can see.
Forty minutes?
Forty miles.
I mean, 40 miles, 19 minutes flight time.
For, for the speak of Trinity, if, if they're coming from Conroe, if Conroe's busy on another call, where do you come from?
We're going to come from Lufkin. Wait, our two main helicopters are going to be Lufkin and Conroe. If Conroe's on a call or if they're busy, we'll come from Lufkin and then they add to three minutes to your flight. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm the base supervisor for Lufkin, for our middle 11 base. You're just kind of in a unique situation. I agree with the other services. We just want to do what's best for your constituents, your county. And we've had the membership, I think now over a year.
Two years.
Yes, sir. We've had, we've had a good, you know, working relationship with the Lake County and Sheriff's.
I would like to make a correction there. From Conroe to Trinity County line, where they have a landing zone that's used frequently, it's only 13 minutes. And from Conroe to the Trinity County Hospital, the hospital in Trinity is 17 minutes. That time, the 19 minutes is from Trinity to Conroe, HCA Conroe. And then all the way to Houston, 37, 38 minutes. Our, our membership, our NSP membership covers flights that originate within the county and adjacent counties. It's not limited to just this one county. Also, it covers everyone insured or not. There's no differentiation there. Also, our upgrade is $30 per year per household, whether you're insured or not. That's a flat rate and it covers all our helicopters across 11 states. Let's see.
In the past two years that y'all have been here, I'll show y'all things and some extra coverage for the different residents. I wanted to add on the extended coverage. Let's say the court decides not to go with y'all, but those people still covered that's.
They are. The residents are allowed to lock in their upgrade for up to 10 years. So whichever term they chose is valid until that term expires, no matter how long they chose and whether you really were on.
Y'all are kind of in a unique situation with the helicopters around the county. Like where I'm sitting in Lufkin, nobody's going to beat us, you know, to the northeast county, you know, northeast section of Yales County. We got Air Rescue and Crockett, you know, they, they can be closer to the, you know, southern, western part of the county.
I think, I believe we asked this question last time. Let's say a wreck happens to me, let's say a wreck happens to me, I need to be flown. Does the ambulance driver or, or the fire department or how's that work? Does it, does it get, who calls it, air, air service? Does it get reported to the sheriff's office and then that dispatcher calls for?
It can be done multiple ways. It can, it can come from the sheriff's office or the ambulance.
Sheriff, is that the way? I'll speak to that. So we typically won't dispatcher a flight crew or, or go back to the ground until we know we're getting information on scene. If the caller says, hey, there's a head-on collision with the ejection, we're going to start turning on ambulance. We're going to turn on fire and we're going to auto launch an aircraft. Till that aircraft is going to be PHI unless they say, hey, we're tired and we're busy. That information then is relayed to the ambulance service that's coming. If the ambulance service says, hey, keep the bird in route or hey, don't disregard the bird, that decision is been made. If we don't auto launch aircraft, then the ambulance service that's coming on scene will make the determination through their dispatches or programs.
So it's just a, let's say it's not, it's serious, but it's not serious. Flight is show up on scene and the ambulance decides they need to be flown.
That's us from the ambulance service that's on scene, back up from their dispatch, not from y'all.
I've done a lot of questioning about this in the last couple of months. I can't find anything wrong with y'all. I can't find nobody in the medical field that, that says you're not great. On the other hand, they say the other ones are too.
They are. Everybody's great. This is an awesome occupation. Our services are so valuable. They saved my grandson a few years ago, maybe a huge advocate. I know the value. I've experienced it firsthand. I know what it felt like to hold my dying grandson in my arms and know that my son might go bankrupt because of it. We might lose him, but the helicopter saved him. Every doctor who saw him was completely clear. He wouldn't have made it without the helicopter. I know what it's worth. We live in rural areas. We need helicopters. I provide and as do these others here, a valuable service that can help protect pocketbooks so that when you're in the emergency room, you don't have to wonder if there's going to be a bankruptcy because of a helicopter bill. I see people every day who tell me that it was a false alarm. They got their great news, you're fine. And so their insurance declined the payment. One lady had two flights declined in one day. They flew her into the hospital. They said, ooh, it's bad. It's light in the city. They turned out to be fine and the insurance wouldn't pay either one for years she bought before she had the final settlement. A flat solution for that, as, as they do too. It's a valuable service. You've seen it in your community. You've seen all of your citizens very happy with this and grateful to not have the bill. If the helicopter bill comes first, it takes care of that deductible or out of pocket expense that would normally be applied to it. If it comes later, that might not be a factor, but most people get there, at least their deductibles saved or their out of pocket maximum might be applied to it. Or if they have no insurance at all, they don't have to worry about that. Or worst case, it's declined and you're going to spend all that time fighting with the insurance company. You don't have to do that either. The company does that. We do it.
I have just one more question and it's probably for everybody, whoever can answer. And I think you touched on it, sir. The, the deal that was passed in 2022, the, I don't remember, No Surprise Act. No Surprise Act. Maybe you just touched on it. If with this No Surprise attack or whatever, if, if insurance denies it, does that, does the No Surprise Act, does that, did somebody say that it conflicts it? If, if, if our insurance, let's say my insurance denies this, this flight, am I, that means the No Surprise Bill is out the window, correct? And I'm, I'm over the, the whole bill.
I can, I can answer that. It's called an adverse benefit determination. It's actually specified in the No Surprise Act, so you will have no coverage. The No Surprise Act is intimately connected to your benefit plan. You know, plain and simple, what's your benefit plan says, blue cross, blue shield, they say, what, what incentive plan? It will follow that on the in-network rate. Once that adverse benefit determination happens, now we'll say that all of us that are operators will aggressively pursue those appeals processes. But ultimately, the outcome is determined by the carrier. Most of the claims you see right now, it's about half. When they first hit the first billing site, get denied for whatever reason, an I, not dotted, T, not crossed. And then they go through six, seven, eight times through the appeals process. But there are some that get flat out denied. It is a non-covered service. That bill will become the patient's financial responsibility. I think each of us probably offer a compassionate billing process, but you have to disclose your finances at that time to apply and qualify for that. And we'll work with them. We don't want anybody to have to face that. But ultimately, you have to treat these basic category appropriately. You can't show favoritism in the billing process or you jeopardize your Medicare, Medicaid population.
Also, throughout the, the appeals process, the patient's not involved in that. We have a dispute resolution advocate for all the patients. So the, the patient's not involved in those. So the patient's not going through that. Right. So just to let you know that.
I guess my question is, Tim, and just, just from.
And I, and I can say, oh, I'm sorry, Daniel. One, one other point is our, our average out of pocket costs for the state of Texas is about $250. So just leave it at that.
Can I touch on that? Because this is where you get into some intricate math or interesting math. You know, as you can sit there and apply enough Medicaid zeros to any aggregate mathematical model and get to the number that you want to, to say the average is 250. Take that population out, now the average becomes 1500. Take that population out and get to the commercial value, the average can be 5,000. So it's, it's, that's just like the odds of flight where they say it's less than 1%. Take the population of New York City out of it, come out here to rural Texas and the odds of flight drastically increases. So you have to understand the math. It's true, but it can be a bit deceptive. And you need to understand what the impact happens here in your communities.
I think that this personal experience, past few times I've been to the doctor for this little minor stuff. They have my insurance, which is blue cross, blue shield, has denied a few things. So that's where I was coming from. Just, you know, a gentleman earlier was talking about his daughter. I got the kids living at home. Obviously, the county commissioner can't afford a flight deal if it's all put back on me. So that's where I was going at about that is if, if someone got the reason I have to be flown, my insurance denies it, who, who happens to be?
If you're a member, you're.
No, if, if we don't have. This, this, I keep referring back to this 2022. I can't remember.
No Surprise Act.
No Surprise Act. If, if my insurance denies it, the No Surprise Act is not involved.
It's viewed as a non-covered service.
Your question is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is one other thing that went out. Our helicopter does have an extra seat for a parent. Our helicopter does have an extra seat for a parent or prison guard or loved one. They can be used in certain circumstances. Were there any further questions?
Any. I can agree.
Page four, you should be able to compare all this, the flight times, with the flight times on the other, so you can see an actual representation. I don't have their flight times, but I know that he provided them to you, so you should be able to compare with those two. And if you need any further flight points for flight times, just let me know. Just take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you everyone. I just feel like we, everybody ought to be on the same playing field. And three years ago, when we entered into this contract with PHI, we were having major problems with the ambulance service in Groveton, Texas. I think we all agree with that. And the sheriff's department was having to be involved in a lot more calls. And we got some money off of a grant. That was a grant. And that's where the money came for our to pay for this. And we did it for a couple of years. And they've been great. Like I said, I went out and done some homework on them. And nobody will tell me that they're not a great company, but they won't tell me that these other ones are not great too. And I just feel like if you want a insurance policy, both companies are offering a family to buy their policy. And I don't think that the county should spend the forty thousand, or the forty-two thousand, one of the forty, one of the forty-two thousand to do that. I think it ought to be the family. That's my opinion on it.
Question for this moment. We have money for one more year?
We do. We, I would have it set aside, knowing that this was gonna come up. But it's not restricted as far as just for that, it's just set aside. So if the court decides that you do not want to continue, that might be used elsewhere for government purposes, for your information.
I think two years ago, turn half years ago when this started, that the grant was filed between you and, I'm with the sheriff's office. Hope y'all found the grant. Y'all had, it was gonna be for two years for this, and gonna be two years for ambulance travel. You, I guess you, we've had a little bit not used in that grant, and there's enough to pay for another year. You know, I agree that if my daughter gets in a car wreck, I agree that whoever dispatches, if that's the sheriff's office or, and I believe the sheriff's office would do that, call the closest one. I don't have any other idea why the families would call further one. I believe they haven't escaped in the game other than...
The reason they came last month is because they didn't get any calls since they agreed with one of the flights. PHI did all the helicopter rides, right?
Correct.
That's why these other two showed up. Because it was skewed so much, they noticed that, like, hey, I usually get X amount in Trinity County because we're closer and stuff. Statistically, they should all kind of get a piece of pie because we're in this weird little location. But they didn't get any. That's the problem. And you wanna save people money, which also lives. That's the most important. You can deal with multi-lane.
Yeah, just to be clear, HCA does not have a membership. The only reason that I actually approached the commissioner and the judge a year ago was because the closest available helicopter was not being called, which is not the standard of care, and everybody has said that. So, you know, I know the sheriff's officer said that actually they called PHI. So that tells you right there, they're calling PHI, that's who has the membership. I would probably lean towards just calling one aircraft too, if that was the case. But in every scenario, PHI is not the closest helicopter. I know that I work constantly with the membership at Midcoast Trinity, and I know they have been told, call PHI, it doesn't matter who's closer, that's who has the membership. So, I mean, we're not just, again, we don't have a membership. We're not just speaking... The reality is, the standard of care is not being followed. So that's why I came originally, is just to make sure that y'all realize the closest available helicopter is not being called. So if Dr. Bid, one of your family members, did have an accident or need a helicopter, the sheriff's department is going to lean towards calling PHI, because that's who has the contracts.
So, I mean, column on some of that. The standard of care, yes, I agree with that. But then I would beg your question. If you're a HCA hospital, and you have an Conroe, who flies out patients from there? We're talking about the, is it an aircraft, or is it close to helicopter? So when we make phone calls to try to call someone, I just get to their mouth. Sometimes PHI says, hey, we're running out of 45,000 ETS. If that is the case, then we will reach out to the next one, the aircraft that's in there, and say, hey, can you show up, or what's your ETA? Sometimes PHI, they say, hey, we're gonna auto-launch. Something changes in route, and while they were in route, they happen to be one third faster than the other, or they have the crew ready to go. They say, hey, we're in route, we'll disregard the other. So it is, it is what we're doing, is contacting PHI. But PHI, if it says, hey, it's a 45,000 ETA, we're not gonna say, hey, just let that bird come. We're gonna say, hey, if you want to auto-launch, that's the reason, or we're gonna go to the next one. As far as who responds, that's between the aircrafts, who's gonna get there the closest. I would say if you want to look at numbers about air evac, and which I'll add, and which I'll flip since we started the contract, my question would be before that, when we had the ambulance service here in town, what was the number of flights that you guys were getting versus what PHI got, or versus what HCA got? Why? Because there was a particular ambulance service that was reaching out to air evac, even after they were on the road from the county that wasn't closest. So I think that needs to make the whole drawing out, that and statistics, there's a good lot of one point to that.
Now, I was just commenting that you said you called PHI. So...
But there's other, I'm not gonna explain the whole process of what happens on the phone calls, but yes, PHI typically would be the first call. But if they say, hey, we're on a manual, flight time's gonna be extended, whatever, then we're gonna go to the next day before. We're gonna look at ambulance, that's, or rather, we can make the determination who they're gonna go. Sometimes if they say, hey, we're gonna go to Midcoast, we'll get aircraft there, or we're gonna go to the land zone on Riverside. Where, in case, that's gonna be the determination that they're gonna make, all we're gonna do is auto-launch your aircraft.
But didn't you say last time when you got up here that you had been called, how much would it present?
I'd have to pull up historically, and I do have to have a discussion. I can tell you, HCA, for example, mentioned it's been zero since this happened, when the hospital opened. We had two right off the bat, until a discussion was, this is third from parties. I don't know. Something changed after that, and then it's been absolutely zero since the hospital.
That's exactly what I'm saying, that we need to be on the same playing field. It's nothing personal. I can't find nothing wrong with PHI, but I can't find nothing wrong with the rest of it. I just feel like they all need to be in the same playing field. And the medical, the ambulance drivers ought to make the call of which one to call. I don't think, if somebody's shooting, having a shootout, I think the sheriff's department ought to make the call. But if you have a life or death on a wreck, it ought to be the ambulance driver. The first one there.
It's really difficult when you have somebody that's your first call. Because I 100% agree that, you know, they're gonna be getting exposed to this, and if they have no bill, lots of whatever, they're gonna say, I'm sorry, we can't do whatever. What's not gonna happen in any sense is, if you're calling for interfacial transfer on Trinity, for example, with people, PHI are gonna be, they're gonna say, we're there in thirty minutes, or whatever the timeframe is. And it doesn't account for that there are other services that were closer to the ambulance.
I would like to clarify two things. You mentioned auto-launch. In case you're not aware of what that is, that's where the helicopter is requested, before you know you need it, you think it's might be needed, this sounds serious, we're gonna automatically launch this helicopter just in case. That way, it's a lot closer before we find out if we need it or not. So when it gets there, it's, you know, by the time you normally get on scene and say, yeah, we definitely need a helicopter call, they're already fifteen minutes closer, or they might already be there right then. It just saves time. If it turns out it's not needed, it doesn't cost anybody any money. They turn around, there's no bill for that. It's just an auto-launch, just in case, so that the helicopter can get there faster if it is needed. It's not a, we're taking the one that's the farthest away in wasting time.
The daily guys can auto-launch.
We do.
That is, but that's what that means. Anybody can auto-launch. It can. But that's what that means. It's not a...
In Trinity, it's for me, Crockett, and then, you know, out of Springs, you guys, I forget where y'all are from, you know.
Love, you have our certain classes and not losing.
Loving St.
Loving St., and then, yeah. So like, there should be card, the cost should be by proximity. That's what it is. It's the only, you know. You only have to worry about money if you live.
You're right. That's going down.
That's going on, Chris, it's hard. Maybe you should put them on rotation like a new record service.
They go quick.
I want everything, even myself.
And I would like to point out that it has been working.
Sure is. Sure, sure it's been working. You've been getting all the business. Sure it's been working.
It's been working for you.
Yes, ma'am.
It has.
Yes, ma'am. Well... Am I supposed to be the bad guy again?
No.
Let's take a break, then come back.
It ain't going away, I can tell you, boy. It's a day's going away. It ain't going away, I tell you, boy. It's a day going away.
Number eleven. Who are you speaking about this? This is a decision. The judge presented there, we all agree that all of them have good services. What would y'all like to do?
I'll reiterate, Doug's that I think y'all will all be on the same playing field. We've got one that's forty-two thousand. Yep, one is forty. Both of them offer a household to buy their insurance. They'll all do the same thing. And I just feel like that we can utilize that money for something other than to help doctors. Bottom line, motion, we do not prove either country.
I'm going second if because of this, and I know I'm gonna catch a flag for it, but we already paying the ambulance service over here. It's already costing the county now to place the ambulance service over here. But if they have the right to call all the aircraft in our area, I would like to see that, so I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Were you in a favor? You're against it?
Yep, and I'll tell you why. My reason is this grant was for this. There's money in there for thirty-nine people. Got, unfortunately, got to no money out of their pocket for this. I've had several phone calls, but I could say a few phone calls about it, concerned about it. One of the questions where you answered about they've already purchased the extended coverage. So that, I mean, at least that does help them if this don't pass, but I am opposed to it. Because we do have the money, and that's what that money was allotted for.
The, the grant was the local tribal, got an rural county federal funding that was similar to ARPA. But it had no, it has to be.
It was not earmarked with that.
It was not earmarked.
No.
Court decided that, you know, we can do two years, so we set aside that. But wasn't sure what we planned to do, because I knew it would come back up. And we had not spent all of that, so I made sure we, I kept that out of there. So it wasn't, it wasn't designated for three years.
Yeah. And we do what? Because supposedly it was told to us that it was gonna be for two years. There was enough money there for two years of that flight, and two years of the county patrol.
Yes.
And there's extra money in there, so.
Yes, but then that's the court's decision whether or not to.
I know, I.
Yep, the nature decision.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to keep the ambulance service in place over here.
That's, that's.
But also, it's not, it's on the planning board, did I miss this or not? But I thought one of them had said that it was only nine or ten that used that service. Other than that, they, they flew, flew that much.
I, I, I get where the court's coming from, I do. I do, but it was one-sided, that's what messed the whole deal up on whoever, as this mention has gone to one company, just like prior to this. Prior to our amb, our ambulance service over here, they were using one company. I, I get where the court's coming from, I just, the money was allotted for that. If this, this deal in twenty-twenty-two that passed, it will not cover it if your insurance denies it. So the money was allotted for that. The Trinity County residents are going to have to come out of pocket if they get denied for this.
But can residents buy, I mean, they can buy membership with any or, any of them at all, or none at all, is that true?
Ten dollars a month, I mean, that's missing McDonald's trip.
Yes.
And if there's a preference by that family, can they request it at the time of, if they're pocketing or if they're.
And we have three for it, and one against it. So move. Number twelve, discuss an act of approval on Verizon GPS vehicle.
Thank you, June, Mr. Carroll. I was looking at a conversation with Sean and Bonnie on through Horizon for a fleet asset, or fleet and asset tracking system. We had a conversation with them, they basically pushed up to, these little devices that could plug into the O P ports on the county assets for the power. They also have options for non-powered. Basically, that would track the vehicle, its downtime, its idle time, time that's in motion, speed. And even has a portion on the app and the software to do maintenance. So rather than relying on deputies to say, hey, you know, my truck is at, you know, five or ten dollars, it needs an oil change. Basically, we're getting a readout from the truck itself directly to the developer, to the app that says, hey, these vehicles are reaching this mileage, they're due for an oil change. The non-powered stuff, they have the same device that can go on, like your, all of y'all's equipment, your tractor and stuff. So if it's coming down to, we need to run a report to see how many miles the county paid, how often were the, were the graders idling or whatever. That device would track all that information. Same thing on y'all during the inmate crew from T D C. You plug one of those tractors in that van, and you can show this is number roadways and miles that we ran completely. This is the trip that it took to and from the unit back to the location that it was at. I think the big push right now is they're just under sixteen dollars per month per device. And it's only paid after services are rendered. But the deal right now is that, I guess they're running a special that you air into a one-year agreement with them now. The device goes for six months, you get its half off. So rather than the fifteen ninety-eight or something, and some change, you're looking at seven, some change, or eight and change per month, per device. If we order, go into an agreement with them now, we have ninety days to do the install. Like I said, always just plug it into the device. The ones that have like a non-powered, if we wanted to, you know, put them on the cleanup trailer, you can actually track the device that way. Talk with Orin, try to get a tap to see if they do some type of discount for our insurance premiums for some type of loss prevention or GPS tracking. The other, or the agency that they do not offer like a standard discount like you would see on your Rover Auto policies. But they do present information to the underwriters to say, hey, this county's taking on this type of responsibility for their loss prevention, asset protection. That's included in the underwriting, so you may or may not see a difference on the premium side of things when that information gets passed on and.
When, when's your grant paid for this?
I'm not sure where Bonnie found the, found the funding for that app, and she didn't speak on that. But the biggest thing, kind of where this conversation came from, is this last FEMA run, that trying to get all of the data and the resources that were used and the timing and all that stuff. It was a pain for the guys who had to do that by paper and pencil to get that information to FEMA. And I still don't think that we got it completely a hundred percent accurate to what was actually being utilized and what was on the street.
But every year, what I'm asking for, I, I added it up, and I may have added it wrong, but I'm looking, you looking at three thousand to four thousand dollars per year, is that correct?
Uh, the first year, we're gonna be looking at less, because half of, six months of it's half off.
Yeah.
So we're looking at two thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars, but you can cancel thereafter.
If you renew it, is it gonna come out at twenty-two next year instead of going forward, we might have to budget for it.
You would need to budget for it. There may be enough, two, three, maybe, from this FEMA money we received. But here's what the thing is, they've used it with FEMA, because it will GPS track. And rather than you guys going out there and trying to figure out where it goes, it takes the unit that you're driving. It actually sends a map that you can print, print out a report, those reports can go to FEMA, they're more accurate. So for example, during the flooding, and there was rescue having been done, you were patrolling, there were man-hours that we set up to FEMA. Along with the fuel that the sheriff's office had to use during, you know, protecting the property, or, you know, keeping people out of those areas that were flooded, it's that.
And then that device will also track like your fuel consumption and go, and gives you a dollar based off of a dashboard truck. And although it, you know, we only went a mile doing around the rescues, but it will show that the idle time that that truck sat there at that high water bridge was, you know, six hours. That'd be something that gets generated report that we can be compensated for on the back end if we get into another FEMA situation. The deal with the FEMA is we don't know when they're gonna declare and say, hey, y'all can, you know, turn the money for it or not. So that's not always on the forefront of our initial responses that are out there. It's usually a week or two after, or they realize, hey, this is beginning to be bigger than what we thought, start giving us this information. At that point, we're a week into working, it's nearly impossible to get it completely accurate of what we did during that window that we were actually responding to. And I think something like this would help us, and I think that you can do the same thing for all of y'all's assets as well.
This, this quote right here is just, it's fourteen vehicles, that's just sheriff's response, correct?
I think sheriff's vehicles and we did two non-powered ones.
I did two trial, I got two powered ones, so that if you were willing to test this out, I'm here in your equipment. We got, I put two in there.
Hey, also, you can put a sensor on it, you know, if the boom goes up, it triggers a, a deal on it. So you can say if the guy was out there, yeah, I grade the road, did this, this, and this. And it only shows that they idle for five hours and the boom's never moved, then you can say, hey, no, this is not, this match not. So I mean, it becomes something that you can utilize, it can be as detailed as you want it to become. But I think the biggest thing is getting it in place, giving it the trial for six months. If in three months we decide it's not gonna work, we simply unplug the device and we no longer bill for it.
So my question is, do we, do they have the money in the budget?
I have money.
On their line, I'll pay for it.
Yes.
Then I make a motion, we do it.
Second. All in favor?
Come on up.
Aye.
So move. Number thirteen.
Oh, really? I love it when we just have to do this thing, we just have to do it. We ain't never done it before, but we got to do it.
Good morning. Discuss back approval of replacing current R M M remote monitoring.
All right, so we recently had a sejuice audit with the jail. Some new things came to light during that, things that have changed since the previous sejuice audit. Four years ago, and I've only been here three years, so it's about, so it was before my time. Bottom line is, in the end, we're actually saving money on a yearly basis, we will be saving money.
You're programmed to say that, I, I, I love that. You ever talked to them before, you're saving us money, go ahead. I'm proud of that. Bonnie has done such a wonderful job. Go ahead.
So during the sejuice audits, it was brought to light that we have to be sejuice compliant on not just the dedicated DPS computers that run, you know, the sejuice information. With anything that they take of information that they do, such as their E-force CAD they use for all the reports. That being said, any of the computers that they use, you know, access E-force have to be sejuice compliant also. So during that sejuice audit, which I sat in on, we discovered that I needed to make sure that our current, our M was FIS compliant. Afterwards, I emailed them, asked them for FIS compliance, never heard back, did a little bit of research, found out they are not FIS compliant. Therefore, I started doing research on new software that is FIS compliant. And this is what I found, as far as I can find, this is the only one.
Okay, don't interrupt me for this.
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say this was gonna be a half as much?
Yeah, you're gonna save about fifty-eight hundred dollars. We've already invested for the, what's currently on there, or.
Then what are we discussing before I make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, baby.
Aye.
All right. Hey, Sean, don't forget your statement, I'm saving you money.
Number fourteen, discuss an act of request for proposal for management of residential services, R L T.
I'll speak, I'll speak quickly, and I think there's something Dylan and he will speak as well. I think he couldn't be here, but on this third round of the future wildfire, wildfire defense grant. We are required to go back out and request the proposals to, to choose a grant management team. Although we already have a grant management team working on the second round, I brought, Mr. Coleman. But then the third round is have to go back out again. So this is just a request to give us permission to.
To go out.
Proposals for the third round.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we, the commissioners need to sign an order?
I think Nikki did have something for you, but it's really, it's not necessary, it's just we have a minute.
I'll sit with you ahead and give the sign.
That's what the board.
Yeah, that's.
That's what the board.
You have to pick the four members. No, well, she will, oh, yeah, she'll, she'll get ready. And let you know who the members are.
And all the stuff. Well, did you walk it down? Did you walk it down? Tell us, so, quick, hey, just real quick, yeah.
You got you. You gave me a look, he's all tough, yes. I am with Lanford, I mean, Manuel, so I just wanted, my first point is really kind of update you on the planning process, the, the grant that you received last year. So we are waiting on the forest service for them to bless kind of our implementation plan, okay? Once we get that blessing, we know the first step, we just wanna kick it off until we kind of know the last steps afterwards. But the first step is for you guys to kind of come up and bless the core team of the, that will oversee development of the grant, of the plan, I'm sorry. So forest service has our plan, they're just making sure that we're dotting the t's and the i's, you know.
Excuse me, just a sec, this is the grant we're talking about that where they go out and they burn the timber for residents and stuff like that?
Yes, sir, there's two grants, there's two grants under the wildfire program. One is, is essentially a, a plan that builds upon your hazard mitigation plan.
There you go.
And has, and it kind of takes a deep dive, high level focus just on the fire risk within. Y'all have been granted those money, and our team has kind of submitted that plan to the forest service. And here's how we intend to do this, once they bless it, we'll be back to y'all, with some action items and timeline, where that might apply.
We don't want to be like California.
No, sir, the second grant is money that's available to actually mitigate known risk across the county, okay? Y'all applied for this last cycle, we were talking about resurrecting that, we're asking y'all to consider resurrecting that grant. We learned a little bit as we kind of made those applications and, and learned a little bit about the program as we've been successfully blessed around this kind of work. There's a thing that will kind of hone that down and get you guys to a, a scoring piece that, that, that we think is a fungible grant. Okay, um, two cautions, there's always cautions, it's grant money, it's across the country. We've been forewarned that this is round three, round three will have more participation than round two did.
Right.
Secondly, pretty clearly, there'll be some federal intervention to direct some of this money to hurricanes that, that hit Florida, Georgia, Alabama. I mean, those are kind of the target, North Carolina, those are kind of, we know that, right? Luckily, they've got more in this pot than they've had in the last three rounds, okay? We, we originally did not approach y'all about this, just so y'all know, because there was a fourth round and a fifth round of funding, okay? The forest service has told us that essentially, if you wanna apply, apply for round three. They canceled round four, and round five looks like it will be a, a catch-up round, just to make sure all funds available under the bill are allocated. So we feel like this is the time to apply. We feel like you guys can be competitive.
Do you have a timeline?
Yes, sir, so, yeah, actually, and thank you. The grant application is due by February the twenty-eighth, so not a lot of window there, right? If they follow suit with last year, what happened is the grants, all grants applied for within the state. Texas are ranked by the forest service of Texas and sent on to the, to the national for review. But then they're now competitive with applications across all the space and all the tribes across the country. They do get that money out, you know, based on that scoring kind of priority and out of all courts to say. Although it's not part of scoring tick tool, they, they do reserve the right to fund the most asked risk based on current events as a game. So that's the baseline, but we'll successfully, you know, go through processing, we choose, y'all choose us, we know we can hit that timeline to get you submitted. Well, what we saw last year was that basically communities got into a no or maybe pile within about three months. And had their answer of yes or no, or maybe or no, or yes or no. They, they received those back in January, I'm sorry, July of the year. So they're about three months late releasing this, so kind of move all those timelines up where you would know probably about budget time or right after the budget, October one next year. Go over that one.
Sounds good.
And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for the opportunity to talk about it, and we're excited for to get your proposal.
Second.